Thank you for stepping up.
You're doing a great volunteer firefighter.
Thank you.
Thanks. My buddy make sure you tell him who needs to work more.
I've seen his, I've seen his setup comp out, he's worked it plenty.
I know he has.
Can you hear the thing, you guys? You're doing a great fire.
Gee, how many did that make now total?
I think we're at twenty-five volunteers now.
All right. Next is our public hearing on the 2023-2024 fiscal year election.
So mayor and council, at the conclusion of this hearing, I ask that you close the hearing and later on in resolutions adopt the levies and adopt the budget. There are a couple of things I wanted to circle around on, including the levy. So since we last met and both the city clerk and the press noted the lengthy budget hearing that we went through, this is not going to be yet the, I'm just going over the changes and then the information on the levy, and I want to circle back on the resort tax. So the changes as we went back through the budget increased the budget appropriations by one hundred and one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars from the last meeting. And it's broken down, it's broken down as follows. Sixty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollar adjustment to the general fund. Mainly, so you can see, transfer out to forty-twenty increased by fifty-two thousand. Those police cars are even more expensive. The Stone Garden grant came through from the county. It's a federal grant where our officers work with the border patrol, and it came through like the day after the last meeting. Revenue is equal expenditures, so we've recognized revenue and expenditures. And then the police department, New World Services for the chief and the two sergeants to build and bring up New World, the mobile information on their phones. And then our watch guard, our new cameras in the vehicles that were so expensive, and it requires a new software system. This is the IT install. And then after they replaced the guts of the boiler, they said, hey, your pool boiler pump is causing some of that corrosion. So there's an additional three thousand one hundred and ten dollars there. You are paying for this, not other than the Stone Garden. We have resources available because the county sent us the June tax money in July. So there wasn't any change. I meant the three thousand one hundred and twenty-five for revenue. So this tweak didn't result in any additional taxes or anything else. The permissive medical levy out of additional resources, it became available when the county sent that money. Eleven thousand five seventy-five, because you might remember from last time's really lengthy discussion, we were capped, right? So we were limited, we had more need than resources. So now we're adding eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars to that budget, adding ninety-four sixty-five to the general and two thousand one hundred and ten district maintenance. We had to add twenty-five thousand four hundred, which is partially paid, right? We're transferring fifty-two thousand, but we had to add twenty-five four to the police department replacement because of the increased cost in cameras and install and so on. Like I said, they're more expensive. And then with our Riverwood SIB, we always pay what we have available. Well, we had fourteen hundred and seventy-nine come in, passed through the county, so we're going to pay more principal. That reduces the interest on that twenty-year SIB. So the first thing that I want to show you, I've got great news for you. So I need to stop to share and add a different one. Can you share? Sorry about this. I always want to do something. The Department of Revenue was able to give us our, was able to give us the tax analysis of where the money, where the increased value came from. So this is our big, huge spreadsheet that we give every year. So Kelly, can you see this?
Yes, again.
Okay, and I'll make it a little bit bigger. So the, our class four property tax, right? That's our residential, commercial, and that money, so that value increased fifty-three percent, our class four, increased fifty-three percent. It is eighty-nine point seven five percent of our total tax base. Now, we've been hovering in that eighty-four to eighty-five percent ever since the nineteen ninety-nine, and that is correct, nineteen ninety-nine sweeping tax reform that changed everything and we ended up with a big bill. Where railroads and corporations got a fifty percent tax break with the theory of if they got the tax break, they will invest more money, they're going to pay more taxes and employ more people, which we didn't necessarily see that. So there's been that, and this has been a hot topic, right? In newspapers and so on about the little taxpayer. So that value, so the top line, ten million, up from six point eight million, that fifty-one point four eight percent increase, that's our residential.
Susan, we can't see that, can you make that larger or can you turn the screen or something a little bit?
Can you? Yeah. So that, so the fifty-one point four eight percent, commercial went from one point nine million to three million and twenty-nine, a fifty-eight point nine six percent increase. The next line is industrial, that falls under the one point nine percent taxing. That decreased eight point four nine, but not a perp progress, it's only point one percent, right? So then we look at the next classification, mobile homes increased twenty-seven point two percent. The three percent equipment, this is, what do they call it, water pollution control decreased seven point six eight percent, but again, it's only point oh seven percent. Then we get into our utilities and railroad, and you're going to see that of this value, this bottom one, our, I don't know why that didn't carry over, but our railroads decreased four point seven one percent. It had decreased twenty-one point three six percent the time before. So what I'm going to show you though is our overall tax base changed by forty-six point six seven percent, four point seven million. We talked about that a little bit. Before, they didn't think they could give me this breakdown, and so I didn't have it previously. Our newly taxable this year was only eighty-one thousand four ninety-four. It's only two percent of the change in our tax base. Ninety-eight percent of the change comes from the revaluations that we're looking at here. Now, we've talked in great detail, right? Value goes up, mills go down, and you saw that Flathead County producing mills. Well, it's a function of the formula, right? Because you get dollars. So last year was not a revaluation year, and our tax base only changed, if you look at column CG here, it only changed one point nine four percent. And of that, one hundred and forty-two thousand was newly taxable. The other twenty-six, that fifty thousand seven sixty-eight was because of some change in value. That was, you remodeled your house, you added, we got a new house, right? So that value. But if we come back a couple of years, right? So every time there's a revaluation year, we see the bump, right? The nineteen point five four percent, so this is the twenty-two year. And we, and our value changed nineteen point five four percent, twenty percent was newly taxable, eighty percent was from revaluation. So we've looked at that schedule though, where it goes up and down, right? The year before, the year before, we had a lot of newly taxable. We, our value changed by two hundred and six thousand. The thing was, we had two hundred and fifty-five thousand in newly taxable. The rest of it dropped in value. So we ended up with this two point five four percent. So it's all in that, and when we read and the concerns and who's responsible for changes and how it works, we know that we drop our mills, and it's a function, right? So because of the increase, the forty-six point six seven percent increase in our tax value, we would have automatically dropped twenty mills. Automatically. Now, if there is any question on this, I'm going to pop to a different, to a different, I'm going to give you my twenty-four tax example, which is still my tax statement.
Susan, I have a question.
Yes.
Protested taxes, do you ever, how do we find out what percentage of our tax base has been protested?
So currently, there's only, there is not a protest. There is, there are multiple appeals, the informal review. So it's not an actual protest until come November, and we get a detailed report.
Okay.
So currently, we don't have a preponderance, and they, based on, I've checked the Department of Revenue, because the state law requires if there's going to be a change up or down of at least five percent in that certified value that they gave us on August seventh, if it's going to change by five percent or more, they must recertify. And they said they were not anticipating recertifying our value. So when we look at that example, so in the resolution and in the budget, we are proposing ninety point three six mills, which is ninety point six five percent mills less than last year, one hundred and eighty-one mills. So using my value, right, I'm going to, my city taxes will decrease from last year's seven hundred and fifty-one ninety-three to five hundred and thirty-six thirty-eight, a twenty-nine percent decrease. But you also have to see my value increased forty-three percent. We know, based on our certified value, that there's an average difference of forty-six point six seven percent. We've tried to do the math before, right? We're, okay, how do we split the baby? But with ninety-eight percent of the change in our value coming not from new growth, but from increased value, we can't keep everybody home. My taxes would still go up, right? There's still a, if you look, city adjusted for tax relief, last year, based on the money we had available for resort tax, I had sixty-three dollars and twelve cents of tax relief. This year, based on the seventy point four nine mills, it is tax relief of four hundred and eighteen forty-three, so it increased three hundred and fifty-five thirty-one. But you're going to see my city taxes are going down by two fourteen eighty-one, right? Because of the function of the math. It's not a dollar for that, like, it's not a complete, my city taxes without tax, without the resort tax relief would be, would actually increase by twenty-seven percent. But we're taking that big chunk for resort tax relief, meaning that I end up, despite having a forty-three percent increase in my tax value, which is about average for our taxpayers, I'll have a twenty-nine percent increase. Now, Flathead County is reducing mills, because that's the function of the formula. But without having their exact mill count, like we have ours, right? Instead of levying one hundred and eighty-one, we're going to levy ninety point three six, it could still result, in my opinion, the county more, right? Because my value went up forty-three percent. So we won't have until we have the total values, and then we'll look at our top ten taxpayers and look at that end result. What we do know is that we're reducing with the resort tax seventy point four nine mills, and you would have automatically reduced twenty point one eight mills because of the function in the formula. So you get to reduce almost fifty percent of the mills, ninety point six five. So for the bulk of our taxpayers, they will see less city taxes. And that's, and that's, so we're recommending later on that when you adopt that resolution, then you adopt a ninety point three six mill. So that's, that's kind of that mill count, and I also wanted, and Kelly, I don't have a hand that I'm just going to talk about, I wanted to talk about the resort tax a little bit, because I, going back through the minutes and reviewing the last meeting, I think it's important to note that resort taxes always in a root, that we collect money, like our very first collection was in twenty-one, twenty-two. And then that money, as of June thirtieth, I budgeted into that next year. So there isn't, listening to the meeting, there was concern that we were budgeting the eight hundred and some thousand for public safety. If next year's money comes in, then we'll have that money move forward, but it's not considered in this budget. These budgets are minimal increases. The general, the total overall budget is two percent less than last year's budget, and we talked about the projects that we finished. But we're not on a spending spree, and during your next meeting, the next couple of meetings, you're going to be looking at your twenty-year, well, your five, ten, and twenty-year capital projects. And we're going to show you that this money that we're setting aside for public safety will cover, will cover the salaries, that's approved, right? We've added two police officers and three firefighters, that was your goal, right? That fifty-five percent. But then we have all these unfunded things. And as police cars get more expensive, and that money from the general fund, that fights, that competes with parks, sidewalks, other infrastructure, right? It's the same little pot of money. We have always held the public safety, like, we have to replace these police cars, because we literally run the wheels off of them, unless they did. Then, but, and now with the fire trucks, like, we, we look at, what do we need? I mean, like, a standard truck now is seven hundred thousand dollars. And so when we save money, or when we combine, well, like, these cameras now that buy themselves, well, it's over five thousand, but they didn't used to be that expensive. So when we outfit a car, outfit, outfit a firefighter, we have very expensive combined. If we buy twenty-four radios, that's seventy thousand dollars. So we need to save that money. We don't have the capacity within the current budget to just add, to just go, oh yeah, let's buy seventy thousand dollars. So in your resort tax money, you've transferred out two hundred and six nine hundred and two, and the rural fire is paying another hundred dollars. That pays, that pays for the firefighter. The other part of the budget that increased, that, you're using your general fund, right? You're using the increase from the state entitlement, you're using the balanced budget, but we can put other money in, like, you're saving that money. So from twenty-one, twenty-two, you're still holding in reserve sixty-seven thousand one sixty-six per fire, and now you're adding, you're still, and you're saving, from the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, you're saving eighty-eight thousand six ninety-eight. We talked over several budget meetings ago about capital outlay, debt, because of the formula that to borrow one, if the city has to borrow one without a vote, and what that capacity is. Well, this money set aside in reserve will go a long ways toward helping to pay this city's portion of seven hundred thousand dollars. So by your agreement with the Columbia Falls Rural Fire District, fifty percent of the trucker, and I'm still using seven hundred thousand, I think that's a good number, three hundred and fifty thousand would be divvied up by call volume, the percentage of calls, and the other fifty percent is divvied up on the basis of tax value. And that's the formula in the contract. So the city's share of the seven hundred thousand dollars, using current certified values of the twenty-three fiscal year call, our share would be two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that one would go toward a purchase of a truck. So we'll review all of the capital, because there are big items, but I wanted to make sure, as we were closing your budget hearing, the appropriations this year out of the resort tax are based on last year's collections, and it's one point two million. And out of that one point two million that gets transferred into the general fund, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents is property tax relief. The base amount was two hundred and nine thousand nine sixty-five, which was about seventy or eighty thousand more than the prior year from collections. Then, police department, one sixty-six, two ninety-two, fire, two oh six, nine thirty-two, and then the little, the part for the software in the audit, eight thousand three hundred ninety-nine. But that's where, that's where the one point two million came from, from the prior year's collections. So just like we did this year, as we start coming down to the end of the fiscal year, you'll start coming in from me or the finance director, like, here's your collections. And you're going to see it on your monthly reports too, like, this is what's coming in, this is, this is where we're at, and this is what you're going to do with the money. But I just wanted to clarify in that one point two million, that that was from, you're always looking at orders. But what you're going to see over the next month, month and a half, is that there is not a shortage for using, for using the funds that you've set aside. But we didn't over-screw the budget by anything other than what we absolutely needed to, and save the rest. So with that, I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified. In the twenty-one, twenty-two year, we took in five hundred and eighteen thousand four fifty-three, and that helped fund the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, where we transferred in three hundred and seventy-four eighty-eighty-three, and saved the rest. And just like this year, we're saving, right? So that's just how, that's just how it works. But we didn't add, there's not a, there's not a whole bunch of additional spending, because the budget, pretty much, they hold the line except voting. So it is a conservative budget. The staff and myself recommend adoption, and you can recommend that you close your hearing and adopt the budget.
Council, before we open, anyone have any questions? Everybody good?
I think we covered it thorough with the presentation that she's done.
Okay, good, Kelly?
Any questions, Kelly?
Yes, I'm good. No, I'm good, thank you.
All right. So at this time, we'll open the preliminary budget hearing. Anyone wishing to see? See none? Do you propose? Thank you, Susan, for all your hard work. All right, and we will address the outcome of that when we put two ordinances around. All right. Next item of business is a notice of public hearing for planning zoning. The city and county planning board will hold a public hearing Tuesday, September twelfth, concerning Rocky Top Cabin subdivision, two lot subdivision. Next item is, we have, I would like to put these together, Susan, into one vote, the three resolutions, do you have a follow-up?
We should vote them separate.
Okay. I just try and follow, but our neighbors are going, the other cities are going. So we're not following anybody.
What did they do?
Resolution nineteen oh seven, setting and adopting mill levies on all real and personal property, approving special levies for special purposes on property within the city of Columbia Falls.
Motion to approve Resolution nineteen oh seven.
Second.
Motion to make, second, to approve Resolution nineteen oh seven. Rule call, please.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Piper?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye, Resolution nineteen oh seven, approved. Resolution nineteen oh eight, a resolution adopting the budget for the city for fiscal year commencing on July first, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Approving appropriations for each fund of the city of Columbia Falls. Have a motion, please.
Motion to approve Resolution nineteen oh eight.
Second.
Been made, second. Have a rule call, please.
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Piper?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye, Resolution nineteen oh eight is approved. Resolution nineteen oh nine, a resolution in the city council calling for a general election to be held November seventh for open city council positions.
So mayor and council, this is for a mail ballot election. There's just over sixty percent of your voters already get a mail ballot. But the county election office confirmed, it wasn't on that plan that's attached, but on election day, there will be two judges here, like, in here, they're not processing ballots, so they themselves will make sure they go in the box, and then they'll drive them down. They will have a locked ballot box here, like they've done in the past, that if you walk into the finance area and they come, they have two people pick it up every day, and they take them down to the county. But this plan is for a mail ballot election with a drop box and two judges here on election day. So we recommend approval.
Motion?
Motion to approve Resolution number nineteen zero nine.
Second. Motion to make, second, to approve Resolution nineteen oh nine. Rule call, please.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Piper?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye. Resolution nineteen oh nine, approved. Reports, mayor and council. John, I'll start, I'll, mayor.
So representative from DOC, that was not, he was not due here tonight.
He's coming, they changed it to the eighteen. And on my, I do have a note to ask you for specific, for additional specific questions. I had sent them the three arrows of the intersections and the stoplight at the truck route, and Mayor Barnhart reminded me of the speed limit. and the stoplight at the truck route, and Mayor Barnhart reminded me of the speed limit on the highway.
Yeah. Reducing it so that we get twenty-five before we get to Third Avenue. Oh, where they would space that, but the thirty-five backward, probably the other side is a bridge.
And then, and Counselor Shepherd mentioned the speed limit coming in on the North Fork Road.
Speed kings. They push you down the road if you're low in twenty-five.
Mike, I wonder if the possibility in order to, to get something like that done, to be to reduce the speed limit on the North Fork Road, if people are coming down off that hill, they're easy at seventy. And by the time they hop over the by the, you're just starting to slow down all the time, so maybe that might-
It needs to be addressed further north, because it impacts us coming into town from Seventh Avenue.
That's kind of rough.
It's supposed to be forty-five, it's not forty-five originally, we say, we come down, they hope for you to buy it, but-
I can put fifty-five, another quarter mile up there.
Yeah.
That might, that might help. I agree with Mike.
And then I've had several people, Susan, stoplight, truck route.
It's on the left. Stoplight at the truck route.
Yeah. My, my inner name's the same, it's just, you know, left turn signal. Left turn lanes. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. The other thing is, um, I wrote Fifth Street, I haven't driven that much, with the diagonal parking, and then the-
On Fifth?
Yeah, and then the parallel front of the Ulls of all places. That's tight. It's almost like you should probably look at diagonal parking one way. I mean, I hate to do that, but, um-
Well, we, um, I forgot, we're gonna review that.
Okay.
Um, and that's us, that's our street.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
But, um, there's actually fourteen and a half feet for each lane.
Hey, it, it, it seems tight, I know there's some, some police tape there, I don't know, something got hit, I don't know.
No, it's, it's a-
But anyway-
Construction, though.
Yeah, but anyway, it's a little, but I notice it's tight. And, and, and I'm thinking, well, if you, if you diagonal park, then it'd only be room for one, and maybe one way.
No, no, four by four.
No.
Full cab.
And I consider myself a good driver, and I've under- There are a lot of long trucks, I noticed that, too. So, I mean, that's sometimes, that's, that's all I have.
The other one I'd like to add to that was, we're talking about not being able to see pedestrians, that means crosswalks. I've noticed there is not an equal amount of yellow paint-
I agree.
-on all ways coming up to our crosswalks. So I'd like, if nothing else, I'd like to see them all made equally long or extended.
Extended.
So we could get the rigs back a little bit, so you could see around here.
I agree with that.
Because that's a, that's a serious safety concern for pedestrians.
And I think we need larger signs, push the button. And no users. Only visitors. I'm not taking-
Thanks, John.
Yeah. Uh, other than Susan, yesterday's day, who's your name? Afternoon, at the end of the street, the water was higher than almost two weeks ago, and I showed you the pictures.
Oh, jeez.
It was approaching, had rained about another half hour, the water was flowing to Tommy Campbell's in the basement, that's how high it was. So we need to address either another dry well, because the one in front of Roz's old house doesn't ever get any water, but that whole side of the street rained over the whole wide.
And it's a huge river.
Oh.
It's incredible.
I know, if I went my lab out, she would've been swimming. And I was surprised that much rain fell, but my rain gauge, we've had five point seven inches of rain in two weeks. So, I mean, it's an inordinate amount, so, so we need to address that, because I know Tommy's gonna be chewing on me when he sees me, but it's gonna flood, yeah, so. Here's your picture, John.
The drains would've, uh, catching that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And there's only one dry well on that holy side of that street, it's been a problem for years. Yeah, with rains like that.
When they're like-
No, on, on-
I know, I see.
And that's, that's, that's the street we're talking about, the chunks. That's it. And you've got all the trucks.
It's not bad, as long as you don't have a, a long cab, a long box.
And then there, like you said, they've got that manhole, I don't know what you're doing, but they had that-
There's a, a riser, they're installing a riser there.
That's, it's a little bit of a, a hindrance, but it's, but it's still, it's, it's tight, and those folks don't use, you know, backup halfway with a sidewalk. When I turn off Main Street, the problem with that turn is there's some kid with a, kind of a funny brown Toyota pickup that is right off those, I don't know how he hasn't been run into, because he has smacked that wall most right up to where the High High is. So that, that is part of the problem when you turn off, the street coming this way. And like you said, John, I hate the trucks. I laugh when I get down tonight, I know they're getting along. Yeah. Yeah, I just think it's, 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 it's a good way to have them there. That's, that's all.
Mayor, um, had a brief question for Chief Weeks down there, that I don't expect the answer to tonight. But since you, uh, you said you're gonna be coming in here with another volunteer fire department, um, in the future, could you give us a brief report in a couple of weeks? Um, just on what our paid firefighters are doing, and I don't mean that as any insult to them, but the, uh, the, I'd like to see, like, you know, what our call times are like, because I know that the call time reaction is reduced dramatically. I'd like to know some of that, so we can talk to the public about that, and just some of the day-to-day activities that frees you up to do, since you're not doing so much of that work. I just wanna be able to better communicate to the public what our great paid firefighter department is doing, and how that spreads the work out a little bit. So, once again, no rush, but the next time you're here, if you could just give us a brief report on that, I'd really appreciate that.
Well, um, Council, you do have the, the runs in your, in your packet, the fire department runs. And you're gonna see the, we had two hundred and sixty-six calls during the day, and the Chief Weeks made fifty point seven-five percent of those. And then on our paid, so we have the three paid people at the top after the chief, Peterson, um, Smith, and Thomas. And you'll see the, you know, their, their calls, um, because of that reflection of during, during the day and the types of calls. But our, um, our paid people are between thirty-five and forty-three percent of the calls. Um, and then we have, we have our volunteer, he's, he's gone right now, his little Larry.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, he made seventy-three percent of those calls. He's retired, he's retired and he runs, right? And then we have, um, Hogan, who made fifty percent of the calls. But then you can, you can see on here who's running. Uh, but you're right, it makes a huge difference to have that truck be able to go out of there as quickly as it is.
We're about thirty-five percent ahead of last year, the same magnitude, no longer, so it's been, been busy, very busy.
Well, one example, Monday, two weeks ago, we had seven runs in one day. My buddy said by the end of the day, he was shot. He's one of the EMTs on that, he said they were shot that day alone, yeah.
But that's all I have, just had a question for the location.
Kelly, do you have anything this evening?
No, I'm good to go, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Kelly, can you see my phone?
I had a couple.
He skips me once.
Yeah, sorry to raise a question. And then he might know, he might not, I'll ask him, though. With the terrible high cost that we're having to pay for, uh, for police vehicles now, would it be, would it make any sense to buy a regular heavy-duty pickup and then turn it into a police vehicle? How much extra, do you know what we're paying for those? I know they've got bigger brakes and, and whatever, but-
And that's, oh, that's a little bit of a real difference, I think, there's a little difference, some of them trying to get the turn radius a little tighter. But I don't know if that, price-wise, we're getting.
I just kinda look at, geez, you know, the price keeps going up and up and up, I'm like, if we can get them.
And that's where Chief's running in trouble, is trying to find them, where we're having to get them from.
Yeah, I wonder whether you could just get one and, uh, regular, whatever, half-ton dodge and turn it into one.
And then, these classics, that's all they are right now, but we have the two Rams, they're just the classic trucks, so.
Yeah, 'cause they used to come with all the wiring harnesses and everything, you know?
Now, R S is doing it currently, because they're so custom, so.
So we've kinda already gone that way.
Yes.
It's supposed to, scary. The other thing I wanna talk about was, uh, the hybrid heights are all filed up, they're all on a couple of spots. Have you talked to those folks, or is that the city's responsibility? This corner and the one behind the new school.
There's supposed to be risers on the road.
And turn the right direction.
Yes, there is. The developers are supposed to be doing that.
That's like the law, where law does say that parts are there for two months or something, they don't care right now.
Yeah. Well, someone needs one, I happen to know where there's one.
A riser?
Oh, right, it's a shop.
Oh.
Um, that, that, that's all I have.
Okay.
City attorney?
Nothing.
Oh, city manager, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I guess I can do that, didn't I?
Yeah, so, um, so, and actually, Sergeant Rice and I are teaming on this. So I wanted to, I mean, we've gotten a couple of calls, not two, right? There are people who are like, it's one-lane traffic. So this is, so this, this parking was developed to meet the city council's goals. This is not at the request of the developer or any judge, so the property owner, this is the city. Uh, because we couldn't do the angle parking on First, who I remember, it was a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, right? But this is a seventy-foot right-way. First, by the way, is a sixty-foot right-way. So seventy-foot, we've got a five-foot curb, or sidewalk and curb, so I'm gonna subtract, so I have seventy feet that we're planning with here. Take off twelve feet for sidewalk and curb on both sides, because not everybody rubs their tires up against the-
Total of, total of twelve.
Right, total of twelve.
So you're down fifty-eight.
Down fifty-eight. Parallel parking is nine feet. You're allowed nine feet for-
Now, you're forty-nine.
Right? And then, I'm being generous here, twenty feet for the angled parking, but like, my Toyota Tundra is not twenty feet when it's angled, right? It's a little, there's a, there's a little bit of a difference when you angle it. I didn't ask to call the engineering, but, um, so twenty feet. We have thirty-nine feet with, we, we can still have a fourteen and a half foot driving lane on each side. Now, yes, like this, this today, where they're still working on that riser, but two cars can easily pass. Now, I drove it down in my, now, year, which is not, I mean, it would be the nine feet, right? It's not a little vehicle. Um, usually I go around the post office way and then go to the store, but I deliberately drove it. I think, obviously, they've gotta get this finished, and get that little pylon out of there. Me, coming into this area, um, and the police chief went out, they've got a big pickup, right? And they went and parked and tested it. It is true that it is tighter than it was, right? Because we've vaded to the twenty-feet, sort of nine feet, right, eleven feet, that there's lots of driving surface. So, so, and just to put this into perspective, when, when Montana Department of Transportation striked Highway Two, they striked them for eleven-foot driving lanes. So, and I always think about that when I'm writing the white line on the right, right? That, well, yes, they moved me over, right? There's more pavement, but they moved me over. I think that as soon as people adjust to this traffic, I have never had to stop or admit it when we're in traffic. And this, this pickup, I think, parks here every day. It covers the sidewalk a little bit, but not, not a lot, it still has the forty-four-inch clearance, so, um, and, and a lot of the bigger vehicles parked over there. This parking added five to six, five to six parking spaces more than if you had standard parallel parking. So when we had looked at doing it on First, which is sixty feet, and then we have this seventy-foot right-way, um, we did this in line with increase in enhanced parking downtown. And the curb, you'll see the curb on the east side, and I think that in another picture. Oh, looky there, it worked. I'm so happy when the, when it worked. Um, we increased the yellow line down on the other end, down on, down on, on the east end. On the nucleus side, yes. Um, just to keep, because we had, we had a vehicle that was still parallel parking there, that big pickup on the end, would come in in the morning and parallel park. Well, the only way that pickup could leave after these cars were parked would be to drive over that curb, which is against the law. So, but we have, so it's a, it's a minimum of fifteen feet around the corner. And DOT did the nu- did the nucleus size. These are ours, we went a little bit farther, because we knew that, one, there's a parking truck there, you couldn't see. This, obviously, the other, whoops, not that photo. Obviously, the other side is not, is not marked, and so I think that's where you said, when you come around the corner.
I'm surprised it's not been hit.
So we need to, we need to, to yellow that. But this, this parking, there is room, and hopefully they'll, I'll find out from public works tomorrow, when is that, when are they gonna fix that riser, so we can get, get rid of that? So, you know, delivery trucks aren't supposed to be coming down Fifth. Uh, they're supposed to be using the, the truck route in nucleus. I, myself, haven't seen a delivery truck here.
I haven't either, it's been a long time.
So just cars, so without the, without the pylon, and then, um, like I said, the police chief reviewed it, and Sergeant Rice will, will provide any additional information that you want. But there's at least eleven feet driving lanes, there is a little bit more.
Yeah, Chief Peters just said that he parked a patrol truck, it's a quad crap, quad cab with a five-and-a-half-foot box, during peak time, um, in the paral- parallel parking, and he said it was easy to back up plenty of room of, of the other parked cars. So I think this is next season. The claim those two vehicles can't pass, he thought that'd be inaccurate, uh, that there's plenty of room for the two vehicles. And he just said that it's, it's a decent, popular place for people to park, to access downtown. And they're looking forward to evaluating other streets to try to gain more parking.
So, and then, as long as that would help, obviously, on that corner on our street, it's out on the highway, which is on nucleus, is where that has to be kicked back, so you can see around that corner, both sides, so we can-
Yeah, it didn't look like there was any yellow coming down our side, so we'll, we'll double-check that. Uh, but we've, um, you know, last year we couldn't get pink, but this year we got pink, so, um, we'll make sure. And we are evaluating that, um, like, in the downtown parking. I think, one, it just, it's a change, right?
It's different.
But adding that, that those five additional parking spaces are used.
Thank you, have you, uh, not anything you're more concerning First Avenue's angle parking, where we put the trees up?
We, so, we will put in the new trees, we're working on the sidewalk. We hadn't, we did not issue a contract for that additional paving, because of the expense, but in your street construction budget, we added the one-time allocation from the state. So depending on your priorities, that would be part of your capital planning, you might wanna move forward with, you know, obviously, we have to rebid it, but-
Put sidewalk and curb on the, on the west side, and put angle parking over there?
Right. But not putting the handicap parking in front of the house that crosses the street, yeah. Um, but we'll, we'll, we can refresh that, because it's on your priority list.
And we saw, if we pay thirty-five hundred dollars, get those trees removed, I remember, yeah.
Yeah, and then-
These are gone, I'm digging this.
And we'll plant new trees and get this sidewalk replaced. So, but yeah, that's on your priority list, so when, whatever you're doing in your capital plan, if you wanna move forward with other priorities.
All she left, it was her now to walk.
I mean, a block won't kill.
No, no, but in those five additional parking spaces, it makes a difference. So, um, and then when, when police and public works, when we're doing other streets, I, I think it's changed. So, but there's, there's right-way, there's room, and- I just need to drive down the side streets, the avenues in Councilville, and I'll appreciate this.
Oh, yeah, very much so. That's a true dog and car there, I agree, yeah.
So that's all, um, just the DOT visit- So that's all, um, just the DOT visit, you guys gave me input on that. Um, on behalf of the city staff, we thank you for adopting the budget and setting the levies and look forward to progressing this year.
City attorney?
Oh, I think one, you brought something up, I think, that you need to discuss. What's gonna happen with the crossing marks over there? If they close that door, or they score down, there's no one there. Because if they went crossing marks, then we could blow them.
So the, um, the railroad, neither the railroad nor the county just contacted us, got any discussion, because it's not our crossing. I only learned about it from a college citizen, who wanted to know what they were doing with those concrete panels, so, um... They don't have to talk to us. I'm just surprised that they're doing it. So, the Department of Transportation does have a meeting to discuss 12 Avenue West again, because it was placed on County's, what do they call it, 130th. And so we're not really a party to it, 80% will be paid, paid by the state and 20% by the NSF. And we're still working on trying to get our sidewalk improvement, which, I'm trying to get them to separate that out from the construction, because it's a year review. Another year, I keep saying, another year to review 12 Avenue West with this new designation, but, um, I'll keep, I'll keep you.
You still may ask him what they're gonna do with the crossing.
I agree.
So, back to city attorney. You have anything else, Carl?
Other than on Fifth Street, then we have, we have a fire truck running up right now. And even with a fire truck parked in that lane, after we got the fire department adjusted, people can still drive up there, so. We have a fire truck there, so it shows the formality.
He did, he would just set a fire, right?
There was a fire.
Good. Police department down there, Sergeant Rice?
I don't think I have anything.
All right, so, counsel.
I would make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Yeah, because I respect it, all in favor, Steve, you probably say aye. Aye. You can hear him.